...of items from closed session.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, with Trustee Milchacher absent on a five to one vote, and with Trustee Jay casting a negative vote, the Board has authorized the employment of David Bouguet as Vice Chancellor for Human Resources, subject to an approval and execution of a final contract by the Chancellor. The Board delegates to the Chancellor the authority to execute the set agreement. On a six to zero vote, with Trustee Marcia Milchacher absent, the Board has authorized the employment of Robert Branucci as Vice Chancellor, Technology and Learning Services, subject to approval and execution of a final contract by the Chancellor. The Board delegates to the Chancellor the authority to execute the set agreement. On a five to one vote, with Trustee Milchacher absent, and with Trustee Padberg casting a negative vote, the Board, subject to approval of the underlying position, authorized the appointment of Tracy Daly as Acting Associate Provost ATEP for one semester, subject to approval and execution of a final contract by the Chancellor. The Board delegates to the Chancellor the authority to execute said agreement. On a six to zero vote, with Trustee Milchacher absent, the Board has approved a six-month leave of absence for a classified employee without pay and without benefits. On a six to zero vote, with Trustee Milchacher absent, the Board has approved the early retirement medical benefits for a classified employee, subject to the approval of a settlement agreement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Fuentes. And before we move on in the agenda at this point, let me turn it over to the Chancellor. We just approved a number of gentlemen to join us in the district. I believe they are here with us tonight, so the Chancellor will introduce them. And we also have a special guest whose appointment was made at the last meeting, but I know Saddleback especially is eager to meet. So let me turn it over to the Chancellor for some introductions of some special guests.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my pleasure to introduce to you some -- thank you very much. It is my pleasure to introduce a number of new administrators, and I would like to introduce them to you at this time and also to our district's viewing audience. First of all, I would like Dr. Todd Burnett to join me here. Dr. Todd Burnett is the new president of Saddleback College. And he'll be moving from Sacramento to Ladera Ranch this week, and he'll be starting here on August the first. Let me tell you a little bit about him. He received his bachelor's degree in political science from UC Riverside, his master's in business administration from USC, his doctorate in higher education administration from Pepperdine University, and most recently, he has served as the Vice Chancellor of Planning and Communications for the California Community College System. We welcome Dr. Todd Burnett to the South Orange County Community College District. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Chancellor Raghu Mathur, and thank you again, Board of Trustees and for everybody here. I am extremely excited about joining your family, in particular, the Saddleback family, and look forward to bringing all my experiences and all the things that hopefully I can bring to making Saddleback to be even a better college than it is today, even though, being from a statewide perspective, I will tell you, I only applied for one college presidency that was Saddleback College, and there was a reason for that. I am truly very impressed, very impressed with this Board of Trustees. In fact, I literally just read your resumes today, and I think you're one of the most distinguished boards I think I've seen in the state. Very impressed with every single person that I've met thus far in the Saddleback family and the South Orange County Community College District. And I'll tell you, I'm just honored and humbled to be a part of it and look forward to working with all of you very strong over the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burnett. Todd, we look forward to -- I look forward to working with you. Next, I'd like to call upon Dr. David Bouguet to join me up here. Please. He's our new Vice Chancellor of Human Resources. He'll be starting August the 11th. Let me share with you a little bit about his background. He received his bachelor's degree in business administration from Wayne State University in Detroit, Michigan, his MBA from Oakland University, Rochester, Michigan, his PhD in educational leadership and organizational behavior from the Union Institutes in Cincinnati, Ohio, and most recently, he comes to us having served as Vice President of Human Resources and Employee Relations for the Desert Community College District, Palm Springs, California. So you'll understand when I say, "Welcome to Dr. David Bouguet to the South Orange County Community College District and the Beech Community." Welcome.
It's a pleasure to be here. I'm glad to be part of your team. I intend to work closely with Chancellor Mathur and the Board of Trustees and all the aspects of it. I'm looking forward to it. The district is developing a wonderful reputation across the state as innovative, and so I want to be part of that team to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Look forward to working with you as well. Now it is my pleasure to call upon Dr. Robert Branucci to join us here. He's our new Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services. Welcome. Dr. Branucci has agreed to start on August the 14th. I wanted to make sure that the team was in place before we had the Chancellor's opening session at the beginning of the fall semester, and it looks like we have succeeded. He received his BS degree in psychology from the University of Memphis, Tennessee, master's degree in psychology from the University of Arkansas, Little Rock, Arkansas, PhD in experimental psychology from the Washington State University in Pullman, Washington. He comes to us from having served as a district dean of open campus, which means distance education or online education, for the Riverside Community College District. Interestingly, he increased their FTES in a short period of time by about 20% as a result of online education, and he's a nationally renowned speaker. And I believe, Bob, your wife was Teacher of the Year at Santiago Canyon College this year? This year. So you can see his background from home as well. Welcome to Dr. Branucci to the South Orange County Community College District.
Thank you. My wife and I are community college people. We are members of your district, and it gives me great pleasure to join someone who is acknowledged as a leader in technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and likewise, I look forward to -- all of us look forward to working with you as well. And last but not the least, I'd like to call upon Tracy Daly to join me here. She is going to be serving for the fall semester as the Acting Associate Provost at the Advanced Technology and Education Park. Welcome, Tracy. Not done yet. Let me tell you a little bit about Tracy in case you may have forgotten. She received her BA degree in technical journalism from Colorado State University, Fort Collins, Colorado. She received her Master of Education in Student Personnel Services in Higher Education from the University of Vermont, Burlington, Vermont, and she has also served as an Assistant Executive Officer for MetroLink and a General Manager for the Los Angeles County MTA, Metropolitan Transportation Authority. Besides serving as a District Director of Public Affairs and Intergovernmental Relations for our district for the last four years or so, she has been lately instrumental in developing ATEP's academic master plan in collaboration with faculty, administrators, and staff. She has been attending the weekly ATEP meetings, and she has been very, very helpful to me in opening of the ATEP campus. We welcome Tracy Daly in this new assignment. Welcome, Tracy.
I want to thank the Chancellor and the Board for this great opportunity to be a part of the ATEP team on a day-to-day basis for the next semester. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, at this point, we will turn to the invocation to be led by Trustee Padberg, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I have the honor of leading tonight.
Yes, please rise and join with me. O heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing on these proceedings this evening. We ask that you guide, that we do your will. Bless all of those who are the victims of terrorism in both this country and around the world. Protect and guide our armed forces all over the world and bring them home safely to their families. And we ask that you honor the thoughts and intentions of those who choose different ways of expressing their spirituality. At this time, we ask that you recognize them. We ask for a moment of silence for everyone to express their own individual intentions. Please join me in a moment of silence.
Thank you, Trustee Padberg.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we have a resolution to present on the anniversary of the opening of the Advanced Technology and Education Park. We have with us our Provost Emeritus at ATEP and the fine team he assembled and has been leading for the last almost year in moving that project forward. In addition, we have the current Acting Provost, President Rockmore, with us. So if I could invite Provost Emeritus Kopecchi and his team, and Provost President Rockmore and his team, I guess Tracy, that includes you as well now, and invite you to the podium for the reading of the resolution. While Gary's been instrumental.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have a resolution entitled "Advanced Technology and Education Park," celebrating one year of higher education opportunities for students. Whereas the Advanced Technology and Education Park has provided classes and services to a growing cadre of students, numbering over 400 in the fall of 2007, over 550 in the spring of 2008, and approximately 600 for the summer of 2008, whereas the small and dedicated staff at ATEP has preserved -- excuse me, has persevered to establish the new campus on the former Marine Corps Air Station Tustin through the challenges of construction, processes of the city of Tustin, and the U.S. Department of the Navy, and the hardships of field conditions. And whereas the opening of ATEP and continuing success of the master planning efforts for the campus are an effort of a team that includes district administrators and staff, and Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College administrators, faculty, and staff, and whereas long-range academic planning efforts for the 68-acre campus and partnerships with businesses and four-year institutions are being successfully spearheaded under the leadership of Chancellor Raghu Mathur, with the strategic assistance of Deputy Chancellor Gary Portner, Irvine Valley College President Glenn Rockmore, and many others, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commemorate the first anniversary of the Advanced Technology and Education Park, Orange County's newest campus of higher education. I so move.
Second.
Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher. Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams. And Student Trustee Lee.
Aye.
We are now to public comments. I see one request to speak. Is that it? Madam Secretary, very good. All right, we will call on Bob Cosgrove, Saddleback College Academic Senate President. And as he makes his way to the microphone, let me be the first to add my thanks to him and his Senate team for the hard work that they put in for the last couple of, well, months now on Saddleback accreditation. And that thanks must also be extended to Trustee Lang on behalf of the Board, who has pitched in to do some work on the accreditation report. There's more work to be done, but I look forward to working with Professor Cosgrove and his team in getting that work done. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chancellor Mathur, for approving our recommendation. I'd like to say a few words about our outgoing President, Rich McCullough. I want to thank him for his years of service, his good pluck, and the fact that even when I made his blood pressure go up sometimes, he took it with great, great style. And both of us being Purdue graduates had kinship as well. And I wish also to welcome our incoming President, who just went out the door, Todd Burnett, and also the two Vice Chancellors, and Tracy, to their new positions. And I'd also like to congratulate Irvine Valley College on completion of its nearly final draft of their progress report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We are at the point in the agenda for Board reports. Let me start, as always, with Trustee Jay.
Yes, I -- this is the 40th year, the start of our 41st year, but it's been 40 years since the first college in the district, Saddleback, opened in the fall of 1968. And I just want to say, I really think things are going well. There's some things that bug me, like contracts that are not settled and things like that. But I really do think it's a terrific district, and I've been very proud to serve here for the past 34 years. In conclusion, I just wanted to congratulate almost everybody who's left, the new president, the new IT Vice Chancellor, the new HR Vice Chancellor, and Tracy, at least you're here. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, in the interest of the hour, I'll keep my report very brief and merely to welcome our two Vice Chancellors and our new college president. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to add my hearty welcome to those who have joined our team today, and I think we have some outstanding new talent to advance the future of this district. I would also like to share with our audience that I have filed for reelection to this Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
Yes, good evening. Well, in the spirit of the 40 years of Saddleback College, I was just thinking, as Trustee Jay spoke, it's been 39 years now. I moved to Orange County in the summer of 1969 and enrolled at Saddleback College and subsequently graduated in the second graduating class, 1971. My wife took her AA degree at Saddleback, as did my son Ian and my daughter Lauren, and we're all very proud of that. And I just would like to announce that I too have filed for reelection to my seat in trustee area seven for the board election in November. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Two quick comments. One, Trustee Fuentes was too shy and self-effacing and humble to mention this, so I will do it for him. For those of you who have not heard, he has been reappointed to the position on the Board of Advisors of the U.S. Election Advisory Commission. That is quite a kudo to him and to the district, and so I offer my congratulations to that appointment for a nationwide Board of Advisors. Congratulations, sir. And second of all, all this talk of 40 years this district has been around, it seems like we started our focus group meetings about that long ago, but it wasn't, and it was extremely productive. And again, I mentioned last month, but I just, now that we've pretty much completed our work, I want to again take my hat off to President Glenn Rockmore of IVC and the Academic Senate President Wendy Gabriella, and all of the team members who work enormously hard on a very difficult project, and I think with a great degree of success. I really thank you two both and the teams that you put together on those reports. So that's it for me. And Trustee Milchacher is not here. We turn to Trustee Lang.
Thank you, Board President Wagner. First of all, I want to thank Chancellor Mathur and the Conservative Women's Leadership Association for providing several of us, Trustees Fuentes, Williams, and myself, the opportunity of meeting the new sheriff at a recent event, and understand we have now made contact with her, and you'll tell us. Oh, and Hannah Lee, excuse me. Did not mean to leave you out, Hannah. I wanted to congratulate Mary Williams and the other members of the Saddleback College Classified Senate on being cited as a model classified senate by the California Community Colleges Classified Senate. Wonderful accomplishment. Board President Wagner stole my thunder in also offering my congratulations to Trustee Fuentes on his appointment. Quite an accomplishment. And I also wanted to say that I'm looking forward to my continued work with Saddleback College, shared governance groups to address progress made on the recommendations by the Accrediting Commission. Meetings have been scheduled through the next several months to meet our response deadline and to hopefully achieve full accreditation. Recognition is certainly appropriate for Bob Cosgrove, who I know has now left, Academic Senate President for Saddleback College, Carmen Dominguez, Morgan Barrows, Lisa Tellson, I see Jim Wright out there, and all of the many members of this committee for their tremendous leadership in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Lee.
So I got to meet the sheriff, and she was really nice. She was getting to meet everyone. She was taking her time, even though there was a lot of people there. I met with the new ASIVC president of IVC, and we talked a little bit, and I helped Kristen over at IVC help plan Welcome Week.
Thank you. And for the Chancellor's report.
Thank you. Couple items. First of all, I'm glad to report that for the year 2007-2008, the year that we have just ended, and we tallied up our FTES number as to what was the final number, and I'm pleased to report that through good efforts of enrollment management by both the colleges and ATEP, we have exceeded for the first time 25,000 FTES mark. That is indeed a remarkable achievement, for which the credit goes to all the faculty, staff, administrators for working hard to serve as many students as possible. As it has been mentioned, I too was able to attend a reception for the new Orange County Sheriff, Sandra Hutchins, at a reception sponsored by CWLA, and we invited her. In fact, Trustee Williams was right there when I extended an invitation to the Sheriff Hutchins to come and work with our police chiefs and police departments of both the college campuses. And in fact, Sheriff Hutchins will be here tomorrow morning at 7:30 to meet with the police chiefs and their staffs tomorrow morning at 7:30 on the Saddleback College campus. I intend to be there to welcome her to our district. I would also like to mention that the Chancellor's opening session will be held on Tuesday, August 19th. This time, it will be held at the New Performing Arts Theater at Irvine Valley College, starting at 8 o'clock, and the program begins at 8:45, and I invite all of you to attend. There are a couple of speakers, keynote speakers at that opening session. One will be Scott Lay, who's the Executive Director, CEO of Community College League of California, and he will be giving us an update on the state budget situation. And also, we'll have Dr. Diana Vanderplug, who is the current President Superintendent of Butte College, and she will be talking about sustainability, environmental issues as they affect curriculum, instruction, as well as construction of new buildings and renovation of buildings and the like. Finally, and importantly, I too would like to recognize Mary Williams for being recognized for creating a model classified senate, working with her colleagues. This is a great recognition from the statewide classified senate. Congratulations, Mary. Thank you.
All right, we are at Board Request for Report, and I understand there is one request that's been received in writing.
Yes, indeed. I've received one request for a report from Trustee Fuentes regarding the review of Board Policy 1500, naming of college facilities, and I've shared the specific language of the report with the Board. I would ask for the Board to take action, to approve this request so that we can do the research and bring back a report either in a month or two.
Second.
Trustee Padberg.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to make a request for a report.
Okay. All right. Moved in second and further discussion on this request for a report. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions. Carrie's unanimously with Trustee Milchacher missing. Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I am going to verbally talk about two requests for reports. I haven't had time to put them in writing, but will do so. I would like to have a report on all classified leadership salaries for the year 2007-2008 that are $90,000 and above. That's one report, and I'll get that to the Chancellor in writing.
Excuse me a moment. We didn't hear 9,000?
Ninety.
Ninety, thank you.
I'll speak a little louder. I think that'd be everybody, I would hope.
I would think so, but I heard nine instead of 90.
Unless you work for the state these days. The status, the second report would be the status on the district's compliance with the 50% law for the year 2007-2008. And then the third would be a report on 2007-2008 on all expenditures for trustees for enter-district travel and outside-the-district travel, including all benefits, all events that they have attended inside the district and outside, fax, phone, email. I think in the interest of the public that this is an item that should be disclosed on an ongoing annual basis, so all expenditures, email service, and what have you for trustees for the year 2007-2008. I'll put these in writing.
All right, per policy, you'll put those in writing. We thank you. Let me ask, comments on any of those or problems you foresee with any of those?
No, I think with respect to the district compliance report, we will be able to provide that as soon as the audit is completed, I would think. But we will be able to provide reports on all of these three items.
All right, let me ask, is there any -- we'll vote on these. Is there any requested to buy the question?
I just have a question. The request on 90,000-plus that Nancy wanted, that was for --
Classified.
Classified. The list that we were presented in this agenda, is this not all employees, 90,000 and above?
Yes, I believe so.
Is that correct?
So they'd be in here.
Okay, is there a way to break that out from classified and academic? Is it broken out? I'm sorry, I didn't -- oh, it is, you're right. So, well, with -- So, well, withdraw that with grace.
All right.
All right. I apologize. Thank you.
All right. So, since those aren't in written form and administration's moving on them, I don't think we need, we need to vote on those at this point. No, I appreciate that. Trustee Jay, did you want to say something?
Yes. I would like a report on comparative positions with the three other districts in Orange County, Rancho Santiago, North Orange, Newport Mesa, or Coast, Coast, and one outside the county, Palomar, because they border us, about the employees in those districts making over 90,000. I'm aware that it would be difficult to get it, but we ought to at least get a compare. I'm concerned when I see our report, but I'm wondering what they pay in Rancho Santiago and Coast and North Orange and Palomar and so forth, too. I'd like to see reports on those. And I'm aware it would take a couple of months, but I, it would involve a lot of chasing down and they might not have them available, but they might, too. So...
It may be public information, so...
Yeah, it'd be great public information to compare our district with, that's all.
All right. Administration will look into that and you can put that in writing as well and...
I'll put it in writing.
In the meantime. Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Further requests for reports? Sounds like you guys will be busy. All right. We are up to discussion items at 8:27, so we have 33 minutes to get through this, right? The discussion item for today, we are going to call John Edwards and John Azuravich forward. And perhaps Brandy Delaney has some information to add as well, we'll see. This deals with campus facilities maintenance plans, and we will start with John Azuravich.
Good evening. The mouse isn't working. Neither are my eyes. Okay, there we go. Well, good evening. I have the honor and privilege to talk about how we maintain a 40-year-old campus tonight. And myself and John Edwards will provide the maintenance status at each campus. As you know, I'm John Azuravich with Saddleback College. We'll do a, tonight we'll be looking at past, present, and future major maintenance projects. We'll also describe the current process for the development of the maintenance plan and we'll discuss maintenance challenges. Over the last five years, we at Saddleback have completed approximately 223 maintenance projects, and these could range from a large cogeneration project at $8.5 million to something smaller like replacing doors or door hardware. Over that time, we've spent over $23 million. In addition, every year, we have an annual operating budget in the maintenance department of approximately $4.5 million. The majority of these funds are provided through the college's general fund and basic aid. And in addition, at Saddleback, we complete approximately 12,000 work requests per year in addition to the maintenance projects. Here's a list of some of the past projects that have been completed. As you can see, they've addressed a wide variety of issues, cogeneration. We've placed a large emphasis on new roofing on several buildings at the campus to minimize the water intrusion into the buildings. And we've done many other projects. Most of them are not very visible, but as you can see, there's been a lot of work done. Some of the current projects we have, BGS, which you're all very familiar with, we have the renovation of the library, which started as a maintenance project and now has expanded into the complete renovation of the library. And that's going to require modifications to the village, PE 100 and a strength center to house operations that are going to be moved out of the library. We have the science math plaza project, which there we have soil movement and differential settlement of the slab causing cracking and tripping hazards in that area. We want to bring the childcare center up to the current codes. We also have several energy management upgrades in process, including the absorption chiller at the central plant. And we want to demo the SA building and move out photography and the ITC operations into the village. These are some of the future projects. Upper quad renovation, we want to eliminate the tripping hazards on the quad and also bring it up to ADA compliance. That's funded to do a preliminary design, and that's through college funds. We have a new loop road, $2.1 million dedicated from basic aid. Repair the TAS building, $5.5 million from basic aid. That's scheduled to start as soon as the library project is complete. And repair science math building at $6.6 million from basic aid, and that's scheduled to commence when the new sciences building is completed on the campus. The maintenance plan is reviewed annually by the Campus Environment Committee. That committee is comprised of all shared governance units. They put together a list of projects and the cost estimate for each of those projects and prioritize it. It's sent to the Planning and Budget Council. The Planning and Budget Council reviews the list, makes a recommended budget and a recommended projects along with that. That's forwarded to the college president for his approval or modification. Once the president approves or modifies the plan, the projects commence, or we seek funds for the projects. And typically, the amount of projects we would like to complete far exceed any funding available, and we typically seek basic aid annually for, to help supplement the funding for these projects. Some of the reasons for maintenance challenges on the campus is we have a history of inadequate funding. As you can, the attached plan shows that we have a $54 million three-year plan that's currently unfunded. Part of the reason that list is so long, we've had a long history of insufficient funding from the state scheduled maintenance program. Even once we get funding and the projects are approved, the facilities scheduling on the campus, it makes it extremely difficult to get these projects completed. The campus is in operation year-round, and typically, we have to shut down a facility or work around their schedule to try to get these projects completed. Something we deal with every day is the staff levels of maintenance staff at the campus is insufficient, and it's, that's another reason why our maintenance list is so long. We also have to deal with issues of past faulty design and construction due to the traditional low bid contract award that's been utilized statewide. I think this, our campus is a perfect example where low bid does not equate to low cost. You board members have allocated tens of millions of dollars on repair projects due to faulty design and construction. And I think we need to try to look at doing something different. Even the state chancellor's office has recognized that the low bid contracting doesn't work. They've championed several changes to the public contract code that allows us to look at alternate delivery systems for new construction, such as design, design-build, multi-prime contracting, developing partnerships with qualified architects, engineers, and construction management firms. And I think it's absolutely essential that the district becomes aggressive and innovative in this area so that we can try to deliver these projects with minimum issues in the design and construction. It also gives a committed group of people who are really interested in the long-term success and efficiency of the facilities that are being built. Now introduce John Edwards with Irvine Valley College.
Good evening. I'd like to just say that whatever he said, but I think I'll have to talk about our college specifically. I also want to review some project completions, what we're working on now, what we're going to be working on in the near future, describe our planning process as it is right now, and then discuss some maintenance challenges as well. In the last three to five years, you've seen projects like the Performing Arts Center, the Police Facility Warehouse, the Maintenance Yard completion, moving the A-500, which is the music building, so that we can continue projects on campus, and the renovation of the community education classrooms to the tune of about $23 million in basic aid that has been given to the colleges to allow us to do that, which is wonderful. In this past year, though, to focus on what we've done specifically, we've completed about 64 projects or major purchases this past year, including finally getting a real hazardous storage area set up, accessibility issues, including handicap, push buttons, and some things like that to allow our students access to the campus. We bought six carts, which on the surface doesn't sound like a big deal, but it's, it allowed us to stop driving large vehicles on campus and close the campus off and make it a much safer place for our people that we work for, our students. There's been many other projects like that, but it has been a very good year for us, and we've been doing a lot of little things in a way, but trying to make it focus on safety and accessibility for our students. To do that, the budget was about $3.4 million this last year, which specifically $647,000 was spent on those projects and the purchases. The funds, of course, are provided through the general fund, scheduled maintenance, capital outlay, and many times, basic aid has kicked in to help us. Facility projects underway right now. We're about to finish the Business Science Technology and Innovation Center. A-300 renovation is starting right behind that, which is the music and fine arts area that we're going to make a new. B-200, we're adding two chemistry labs and a biology lab and a classroom to that building, and that is scheduled to start in the near future. And of course, we're going to have some secondary effects, and we're going through that right now as we're emptying A-300 so the work can be done. And on the back end of it, we will be removing the A-500 buildings, which are temporary buildings, from the campus, so they will leave the inventory. As far as the future, there's a lot that's out there right now. The Bronca entrance is going to be another place where we're going to add accessibility to the campus from the standpoint of traffic. The library recarpeting, sounds like a small thing, but if you're a student in the library and look at that every day, you understand how important that is. There's a slab repair that's required in the admissions and records office, something near and dear to me from my future, or my past, that is. The assessment of the campus energy is something that we want to do, and we want to really look at that afresh. I'm hoping that next year, we would be able to come to you with a basic aid request that would do things like putting a solar array on top of that new Business Science Building so that we can actually use all these facilities for us for our future. As far as the maintenance plan, that's one of the areas that I, we will be focusing on, and is actually one of our strategic planning initiatives this next year, is to focus on building a preventative maintenance and planning process. The Academic Facilities Technology and Planning Committee is the group that we're focusing on that with. And for our sake, once we get through that process, that, the recommendations then are forwarded to the Strategic Budget Development Committee and of course, then approved by the college president before we move forward on them. As far as maintenance challenges, frankly, one of our biggest challenges right off the top is keeping up and handling the new projects. That's a very good position to be in, and we actually appreciate that. Maintaining facilities with current staff levels, much like at Saddleback, that is a challenge at IBC as well. We went through a tough year this last year with the 50/50 impacting the hiring and frankly, replacing the people that we needed to keep the campus going. Making up for previous projects that had faulty design and construction, that is something I probably spend 20% of my time right now working on the Performing Arts Center. And a lot of that, we're trying to figure out, how can we do it better? So, our current approaches are maybe threefold. One of the issues that we're doing right, we did as a team, and it was John and Brandy Delaney and myself, we interviewed the construction management firms. So, we're trying to do a better job as a team picking construction management firms that you will eventually hire for the district. Another approach to that is focusing on upfront design and making sure that we detail enough of the, our expectations so that when it's being bid on or it's being built, that we're in the driver's seat to make sure that what we get is exactly what we've asked for. And of course, one of my big key elements right now is probably to engage my staff. One of the things I think was a challenge, taking over the maintenance shop at IBC, is the staff wasn't completely motivated like they needed to be. And I think we've done a real good job of bringing the staff back into play. And I think that, I hope, at least for you, if you visit our campus, I'm certainly hearing the feedback from the people at the campus, is each day, we're making it a more positive campus atmosphere and something that is a place we can be proud of, which is what our ultimate goal is. And with that, I think it's open for questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Trustee Padberg.
Yes, for John Azuravich. What is the SA, can you kind of geographically tell me the SA building that's going to be demolished?
That's the small modular building that's right next to AGB. It's in between AGB and BGS.
I see. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to thank both you individuals for all of the hard work and effort that you've made and the impact that you've had on our campuses and also for a terrific report. Thank you.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you. We are at the consent calendar. Let me ask, are there items to pull? And for the record, administration is asking that we remove 5.13, which we will do. Any others? Trustee Padberg.
5.9, 5.12, and 5.17.
Trustee Fuentes.
5.14, please.
All right. Seeing no further requests to pull, I'll entertain a motion to approve the balance of the consent.
Still move?
All right, let's vote on that. Matter carries unanimously. And at this point, let me ask if any of my colleagues would, would offer a motion to continue this meeting until 9:30. Trustee Williams.
I move we extend the meeting to 9:30.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously with trustee Milchikar. 5.9, trustee Padberg.
Yes, I would like to just have a little more explanation of which signage we are going to be replacing for $344,500. And I see that we have the amount of bids, but if we could have some details on which signs and what, how they're going to look, some of that I'd appreciate for our vote on this item.
All right. And let's call John Azuravich back up and see if he can answer that question.
Yes, we're probably going to replace just about every sign that you see on the campus. And in addition, we're going to be adding many more new signs. These will be directional signs for traffic, and it's also going to be signage for pedestrian traffic also throughout the campus. And it's modular, modularized system so that in the future, if buildings or functions move on the campus, we can just pop off the sign and put a new one, and we won't have to replace the new sign.
Just a follow-up to that. You talk about pedestrian signs, will that also mean restriping all the streets in some way?
There's no striping in this.
Okay. Because I know that's an ongoing issue, so, so that's a separate budget item then.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. No, I'm sorry.
Move approval.
Thank you. Good call. Thank you. Matter carries unanimously. Trustee Padberg removed item 5.12.
Yes, this is an important item. We're laying off, classified employee layoff, and I hope this isn't a precursor of things to come, but I think it's very important to note this. And it's not a full-time, yes, it's a 25-hour-per-week layoff, but I think it should be noted and separated out from a massive consent calendar. So, that's the main reason. I will support the item and I'll move the item.
Further discussion?
I think we may need a roll call since, no?
No. No. All right. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item.
Seeing no further discussion, let's vote on the item. And the matter carries again with one trustee absent. For the record, and I don't think we've noted this, trustee Milchekar is absent due to an illness in her family. We expect her back next month, very much look forward to getting her back next month, and wish her family member good health. All right. 513 has been pulled, and trustee Fuentes asks for removal of 514.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. 514 calls for the increase, as I read it, of 200% of a architectural services contract from whatever it was to buy $125,000 to a total of $185,000. Later in this agenda, we conclude our ERNA relationship with the folks that we have been dealing with, and I think that this contract services might be a little early here. I would like to have a see what direction we're taking in the next 60 days, and then perhaps have this matter come back to us at that time. I'm not prepared to expend these dollars presently.
Let me turn it over to the deputy chancellor for an address, to address those issues and find out, are we spending these dollars immediately?
Well, some of them, we are. This, this is the architect whose specialty it is, studio design. The firm is here in our local area, but they do work all over the world, and they're one of the premier designers. And they're the ones we're turning to every time we have issues from the city that we have to deal with when it has regarding the design of those facilities. We ask them to do it. As we began this project, they weren't one of the contractors we were using, but as we had to take over more and more of the cost of the design because of what was happening in our ERNA, we just need to be able to ask them for work. I don't have any reason to think we're going to spend all this money, but we didn't want to keep coming back to you every time we had a need.
And I notice it's terminable on seven days' notice?
All right. We, all we have to do is not give them work.
Okay. Trustee Padberg.
Well, they're already on contract. Is that correct?
We already have a contract with them, right.
Right, and, and this is just to...
Yeah, we, we ran out of money on the contract.
All right, increase the availability of funds if we need them, but it's not to actually approve paying them.
No.
Unless we actually engage them for more work.
Correct.
Further discussion? All right, let's vote on the item. The matter carries with one no vote. And trustee Padberg pulled item 5.17, which is transfer appropriations to close of fiscal year.
Yes, I pulled this item. I think anytime we are transferring monies out of reserves, we should be given prior notice about the specific amount and what it's going for, and for that reason, I will not support this item. Apparently, this is something that is expected, and I, I think reserve monies should be very judiciously separated out and acknowledged when they're coming out.
Trustee Williams.
I think this information was in the budget last month, wasn't it, Gary? When we approved the budget, I mean, the indication was we would be making these transfers.
Okay. This is a, a request that the county office of education requires, or requests of every district in the county every year. And the reason for that is, is as we close the books and they're making the last corrections and balancing, if there's any, any need to make an adjustment, they couldn't do it. They'd have to wait, you know, another month or whatever it is until the, we have another board meeting before they could close our books. And so, we've always done this, the, it isn't large amounts of money, it's just minor corrections.
Well, it sounded very familiar, I thought we'd do it every year.
Yeah, we do it every year.
Yeah, thank you.
That's why I said, we do it every year.
Trustee Padberg.
Well, with that explanation, that this is something being requested not by our management, but by the, the county board of education, I will support the item.
Let's vote on the item.
So move approval.
Second?
Thank you.
Sorry.
It's another consent calendar resolution, we don't need to vote by roll call. Matter carries unanimously. We are through with the consent calendar. Item 6.1 is here for approval, this is the basic aid priority list.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, and we'll start with the chancellor.
I would just like to put this item in perspective, that we have a board policy on allocation of basic aid dollars, and we follow that policy whenever, whenever we need to address requests for funds from basic aid. In this case, this is an annual process, when we consider all prioritized needs from campuses, including ATAP as well as the district services, and we look at their educational and facilities, master plan and the like. And those recommendations are discussed in the chancellor's executive council, and then from there, I receive recommendations that I bring to you for board approval. As you will notice from the list, we have allocations recommended for a number of areas. The standard ones that we do are in the area of technology upgrades, for example, instructional equipment allocation for the colleges. This year, we are requesting funds specifically for campus appearance improvement and also for scheduled maintenance. Once board approves these allocations, we plan to incorporate them in the final budget. They will come to the board next month for approval. In the meantime, of course, we're hoping that the state will adopt the final budget as well.
Trustee Jay.
Yes, I, I'm not going to support this, and I'll tell you why. I believe that this particular item is establishing a new priorities for 16 million bucks out of basic aid. We actually have total use of this money anyway right now. If we want to put it into cap outlay, we'll say, or campus appearance approval, or technology, or whatever it is, we can do that, from the 16 million unfettered. Now, basically, my reason for that is the spirit of the times. I listen to the financial news every day, spend hours with it, work on it, deal with it, invest on it, uninvest on it, lose money on it usually. But the point is, what I have certainly learned, not that I didn't know it before, is right now, expect the unexpected. And I hate, and I, you hear that all day long, I don't care if you're on the internet, listening to the, the tube or whatever you're doing. And I think we should leave as much flexibility in that 16 million dollars as we can, and not tie it up in specific amounts. I'm aware, by the way, if we tied it up in specific categories, that we could pull it out category by category, but that involves a lot of work and a big hassle, a lot of, of board activity and administrative activity. I'd just like to leave it unfettered as 16,880,000 instead of putting it into categories.
Let me jump in, if I may, and maybe alleviate some of your concerns. It looks to me like the allocation request of 16,880,000 is less, considerably less than what was previously approved. So I think administration is moving in the right direction, but if you total what's in the previously approved column, you'll find that it's considerably more than $16,000. There's one item, there's one item that's already 24...
You don't know because the previously approved item wasn't totaled.
No, it wasn't, but if you look at it, just under retiree benefits, there's 24 million. Under technology, there's 15, and both of those have gone down significantly. One of them is almost the 16 million in and of itself, and the other is well in excess. So you don't have to total them, you can eyeball them and see administration's moving in the direction you want to go.
I can see that there. Yeah, they're huge. I would say that the other, before this particular action is taken, we'd be talking about between 40 and 50 million already tied down. But I guess I'm not in favor of tying down another 16 million.
Okay. Let me turn to the deputy chancellor to address some of those concerns.
Okay. In the next fiscal year, we would expect to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of 42 or 43 million dollars in basic aid. And what this is, is the setting aside of a portion of that for needs that we have, that we know of right now, that we could put into the budget and, and we can continue to operate. These aren't just sums of money, they're earmarked for certain things. For instance, one of this is to pay for the election. So we have a trustee election, we're going to pay for it, but we don't have any money to pay for it except through the basic aid. So that's why we're asked, if, if we don't pay it out of basic aid, it's coming out of the college's operating budget. And another one of these is the, the board passed a policy saying that we were going to increase the reserve from 6.5% to 7.5%, and included in here is the money to do that. We have, under ATAP, we have a number of things that are going on. We don't have money to continue those operations. If we don't set aside some money, we stop operating. Or else, every single PO that come, that gets written, we got to come back and ask you for authorization for each individual transaction. Technology, this is something we're very proud of. Every year, we're investing in technology, and that's what helps us make a leader in the field. And these are for very specific projects that have been proposed by the colleges and for software development by district IT. So without this authorization, we wouldn't do any of that work. So I think it's important to do, it's, this is the use of basic aid money that makes us move forward, and I urge your approval.
Thank you. Trustee Williams.
I'm, I'm going to support the item. It's, it's not an expenditure of the money, we're just prioritizing how we intend to spend it, correct? For future expenditures, and as we contract out for services, a lot of this will come back for other items of approval, correct? In future agendas.
Correct. The contract that comes along to implement these will come to the board. That's right.
No, I, I support it. It's just a concept plan, we're not actually spending the dollars today.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, just a couple of items of clarification. Trustee Wagner, or president Wagner, you made a point about the previously approved column, but those are cumulative numbers over the periods of time in which those prior allocations have been made. So I think that's important to point out. Those aren't just prior year allocations. Those are allocations that we've made in the past that totaled those amounts over the number of years that are indicated in that column. So I think that's, that's an important clarification. The other thing to address trustee Jay's comment is, you know, I agree, we are in uncertain times. Trustee Jay, one of the reasons why we did increase the general fund contingency amount is, was specifically to address that and increase that contingency amount because of the fact that we don't know what's going to happen in the future, so we've, I think, prudently socked away some additional funds. I think the one probably that troubles me the most is the scheduled maintenance allocation, and that's because, in my view, technically, that's, I think, iffy in terms of strictly complying with the basic aid policy that we laid out, which essentially said, we weren't going to use that money for ongoing operations. And I think scheduled maintenance certainly could be viewed as an item for ongoing operations. Now, while I say that, I also recognize that the college budgets are extremely tight, that there is money in the college budgets to do this kind of work, and therefore, that there is some backfill that needs to be done, and the only way to do that is through basic aid. So I, I am willing to support that for that reason, but I would not want to see us continue down that path, you know, just on a, on a regular basis. So it's, I think it's important to realize that that's what's going on here, and, and not set what I think could be a dangerous precedent to continue to do that.
Trustee Fuentes.
I think Gary gets... I think Gary was going to say something, I don't want to cut you off. I, no. I, I was going to respond to Dave, and I, I don't think I need to.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to support this item because I believe, very importantly, that it's a very prudent method that the district has implemented and, and that it serves the district well. My greatest motivation for it is, and I think it says clearly to our community, that we do have purposes and intents for judicious expenditure of the dollars that we have. From time to time, this board hears some outlandish comments from folks that we have enormous pots of money that are unclaimed, unused, and just available for whatever might be on the minds of whoever is looking for money. And I think that, that the board needs to make declarations whenever we can of the burdens that we face, of the obligations that we have, of the real-world responsibilities that we have as a board, and I think this is a good instrument to do that.
Thank you. Trustee Jay.
Yes, I'm, I need to have two questions answered, Gary. The previously approved column there, which looks like something between 40 and 50 million, have those monies been expended already?
Yes, those are past year's allocations. We spent them in past years, and so the request is within the...
The 16 million we're talking about here, were the, are these part of the budget now?
No, we haven't put them in the budget until you approve it.
Okay, now, the last thing, then, is were they intended to be put into the budget, were not, were not put into the budget that you submitted to us because you felt there weren't funds available for them at that time?
They weren't put into the tentative budget because you hadn't approved it yet. We intend to put it into the final budget.
So you waited to see if there was money, adequate money to fund these things, and decided to put them in here?
No, actually, it... Actually, it was more the process being completed rather than waiting to see anything about the budget.
Okay, so actually, these are the first budget items that we're approving, then, aren't they?
Actually, no, because you approved the tentative budget, and we're operating right now on what you approved in the tentative budget.
T tentative budget?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think the way you've explained it has been satisfactory to me, so I will support it.
Trustee Padberg.
And just to clarify, my understanding is, before we actually expend any of these monies that we're setting aside, it'll come back to the board.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's in the final budget, you mean?
No.
It'll be back into the board in the final budget?
No, as an individual item.
The contracts...
At the time of the actual expenditure?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
All right. Seeing no further requests to speak, let's vote on the item. And trustee Williams is gone. Can you clear his seat and make it, this vote is absent, very good. Matter carries unanimously with two absences.
Okay.
Item 6.2, Construction Management Services pool, I think this is back for a second visit, and let me turn to the chancellor to explain the item.
Yes, in light of the discussion on this item at the last board meeting, the staff went back to the drawing board and looked at the number of firms that were being recommended last time, and to see if there were any additional firms that would qualify to be among the top firms for consideration whenever they were needed for architectural work, construction work, and the like. So with that in mind, six firms are being reported here. Last month, we reported four of them. And in addition, upon my urging, district director of facilities, Brandy Delena, has outlined the process for selection of these firms, these firms in much more detail. Furthermore, I provided additional information on the process through my update to the board. So I hope that addresses many of your concerns. The bottom line is that we would turn to these firms as qualified firms to consider for future projects, and if there are some other specialized needs, then we will certainly open up the process and invite some other qualified firms as well before we bring a recommendation to the board.
Trustee Fuentes.
First, I want to commend staff for a much better explanation, and I think that this is worthy of support at this time with that explanation and with that assurance. I think from time to time... I think from time to time, we move too fast on items, and we took a little time, we got more information. It gives us comfort and a better decision, and I intend to vote yes at this time.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second? All right, further discussion? All right, let's vote on the item. And the matter carries unanimously with Trustee Melchior absent. Item six point three, also here for approval. This is-
Move approval.
Second.
All right, this is the termination of the urna. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item six point four, here for approval, an agreement for legal services.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Discussion? Matter carries unanimously. I think, are we going to get a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There it goes. All right, six point five, board policy revisions, here for final approval.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And matter carries unanimously. Item six point six, here for review and study only.
Move approval. Seconds for review and study.
Second.
All right. Discussion on this item while you have your chances, at least at this stage. Seeing none, let's vote on approval for review and study. Matter carries unanimously. All right, six point seven, academic personnel items, here for approval and/or ratification. Let me ask the deputy chancellor, any changes to this item?
Move approval.
All right.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item six point eight, classified personnel actions, for approval or ratification. No changes indicated by the deputy chancellor.
Move.
And seconded, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. All right, item seven point one, here for information, the basic aid report, questions or comments from, oh, there's two additional items, that's right. I'm sorry.
Which one did we last do?
We, I'm sorry, we last did six point eight, and that's right, the-
Six point nine is the Brown Act.
We had two additional items. Six point nine, resolution regarding implementation of the Brown Act, and-
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Some of.
Subject to chancellor.
Okay, the chancellor, right, for discussion purposes, moving seconded. The chancellor would like to comment on the item.
I would just like to offer a minor clarification in the resolution itself, if I may. In section one, in the fourth line, where it says, shall be made available for public inspection at the district office, I'd like to insert district chancellor's office to make it more specific in terms of the location where the information will be made available.
Questions, comments from the board? All right, this is here for approval, let's vote on it. And Trustee Fuentes is absent. The matter carries unanimously. The matter carries unanimously. And finally-
Six point ten.
Yeah, there should be a roll call. Good catch. All right, let's call the roll, Madam Secretary, on that item.
Trustee Fuentes.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Wagner.
Aye.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
All right, matter carries unanimously with Trustee Melchior absent. Six ten is here for approval, but administration has resolved it and is pulling it, so we will not be voting on that item. All right, seven point one, now, finally. This is the basic aid report?
No moving of anything on this.
Nope. Questions or comments? None, very good. Seven point two, another information item, the monthly facilities plan status report. Seeing no discussion, we move on. The list of board requested reports, item seven point three. And next month, we will have the new items added to it. Trustee Lang, and then, Trustee Lang.
I was just reminded, the chancellor, that there was a request for the report that I had made, and that will also appear, apparently, in the future on the list of board reports.
I'm well reminded.
All right. And Trustee Padberg.
I see this time that this report is shrunk down to one, and that this apparently is now only going to be carried forward for one month, is that right? What's the difference?
What's the difference?
Previously, we had the prior reports, and even though they may have already been submitted, they were still listed in what information we received.
Right, once the reports were issued, they tended not to fall off the list, and we tried to clean that up so that they hadn't fallen off the list. These are only pending reports, as I understand it.
That is correct, and it has been a while since the board had requested any reports, so we thought that instead of just keep carrying them, if you'd like us to carry a few old reports, we'll be happy to do that. But after a while, we thought, how long should we continue to carry them forward?
I understand. It's just different, and I ask for a clarification on why. Thank you.
Trustee Fuentes.
Mr. President, I wonder if we could ask the Office of Trustee Services to send us each a, several blank forms for these requests? It seems that all of us, and I'm included, get to the meetings without having in hand these requests for reports. And maybe if we each had a, you know, half a dozen of these forms at our office, we could do that.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item seven point four, another information item. Discussion on this item. Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This item is an ongoing request, which I have made through the years, to bring forward into the public record the level of earnings of our district, so the taxpayers may know how dollars are spent ever more clearly. I think that this is informative. We, ninety thousand dollars as a base, it shows the generous support of the taxpayers of the South Orange County Community College District for their fine community college and its employees. So thank you for this report, and I hope that the public has the opportunity to review it.
Thank you. All right, we are at item eight, which are reports from our constituent groups and others assembled at the front table. And let me start with, since we have no president at Saddleback College, let's start with the president of Irvine Valley College.
Okay, thank you very much. I too would like to welcome our new Saddleback president and the two vice chancellors who have stepped out, but we'll see them soon, I'm sure. Most importantly, I want to thank the chancellor for his recommendation and the board for approving that basic aid list. It's hard to say in a meeting like this how important that decision was and how deep it will go to the college's effectiveness in serving students across the board. Every dollar will eventually end up in the hands of students and their participation in education at the college. Thank you very much for that. I missed the last meeting. We had some discussion of our accreditation task force process. I would like to thank the entire task force for their efforts that has been going on now for almost seven months. And it has been a lot of work, there's been a lot of commitment from Board President Wagner, Gary Portner, deputy chancellor, as well as many other college participants, to get that work done. I hope you'll like the draft when you see it. It looks very accreditable to me, and I'm relatively sure that it will be successful. I think it hits the mark. I should say something about ATEP. And I would like to say that the enrollments there, on that small campus, are just exceeding expectations. We're nearing six hundred students for the summer, and fall enrollments are marching along fine. Much of those enrollments are in programs that will eventually be held at the permanent campus, so that's all very good news, that we're moving in the right direction. Soon, we'll be needing more room to accommodate additional students. The work with our partners, this is a very exciting project, working with Cal State Fullerton, they're very excited about working with the district in a number of academic areas. Chapman University and Chapman University College, again, very interested in working with us, and now UCI has joined in that. I find a lot of excitement on their part. They are coming to ATEP to have these meetings, so they are interested, and I expect some very, very good things to be happening in the future on that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the IVC Senate, Academic Senate President Gabriella.
Good evening. Thank you. I also would like to thank Board President Wagner for his participation in what seems like forty years' worth of meetings. And we know that you're taking time out of your busy work schedule to assist us with the project, but your help has been invaluable, and so we really appreciate it. Of course, Deputy Chancellor Portner, we appreciate your help, too. Probably one of the most important people on the focus group, I think, in my opinion, has been our college president, Glenn Rockmore, has done an excellent job in creating a safe harbor and a really nice working environment for us all to come together and hammer out some pretty longstanding issues. So thank you, Glenn. Also, I want to mention John Edwards, who did the presentation tonight on facilities and maintenance at the college. Since John's taken over, there's been a hundred percent improvement in the facilities and maintenance at the college. He's done a splendid job, so we need to recognize all of his hard work as well. And he is improving the climate and atmosphere at the college. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Saddleback Academic Senate?
Professor Asbro. Thank you. Apparently, at a previous board meeting, you changed my sex, and I'd request that agenda item be put on there, that I change my sex back to male. Says Carmen Dominguez.
We're not going there.
We're an opening and affirming school. I'd like to report on just a couple of things. One is the progress we're going to be making in the next several weeks on the progress report. We already have one team in place that's been doing work very steadily on the SLOs, and we're shooting for the twenty-seventh to have completion of close to two thousand SLOs done and approved. The other two teams are being put in place right now. I'm sorry that we're behind, but the direction that we went earlier was appropriate, I think, for a while, but then things got screwed up, and I'm not certain exactly what happened. In the fall, we have a three-hour training session for our twenty-two-plus faculty members coming in, and we plan to extend this into the first eight weeks as well. One to two hours, if we can find a convenient time, when everyone is available. And so we'll take in things like, you know, who are the various people who run our labs, and what's there that these new faculty members need to know about so they can send students there, knowing that these services and these people are available to assist them. Or we're going to ask the Student Services Health Center to come over and talk about what they provide, and ask Harry Palmer to talk about safety in the classroom, as well as emergency preparedness, and Lisa Tilson talking about counseling services for students beyond just academic issues, but things that affect their lives at home and on the campus. The Faculty Association will come in and talk about tenure and other issues that, again, are important to employees of the district. So we'll have an ongoing series of topics. This will be followed also by working with our part-time faculty. Last spring, last fall, we did an extensive part-time survey. We had six hundred and twenty-plus part-timers, over four hundred responded to the survey. So we have quite a bit of data that we need to sort through in the fall, and then come up with some recommendations, send it to the senate, then to PBC, and then make recommendations to the college president. So we have lots of things going on, and look forward to the upcoming year. And Dave and Don, thank you very much for assisting me and the faculty and the staff at Saddleback regarding our accreditation issues.
Thank you. On behalf of the Faculty Association, Professor Hagerty.
Thank you very much, President Wagner. The Faculty Association has no report for tonight. Hopefully, next meeting, we'll have something to report that indicates progress that we've had in regards to negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me move to the other side of the room, and first, welcome the newest member of our front table. On behalf of the POA, we have Officer Santos Garcia with us today, and welcome. Do you have a report?
On behalf of the POA, we have nothing to report today.
Well, welcome.
This is my first meeting, and I thank you all for welcoming.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you all for recognizing the award presented to our Classified Senate. I get to be out here in front of the camera and get the recognition, but it's the hard work of the team that makes up the executive board that has really accomplished it. And we couldn't have done that without the generous support of the college that provided us the funding to be able to do the things that we've wanted to do over the last year, particularly in terms of staff development, where we've been able to facilitate a number of employees who've taken classes, gone to conferences, and done the things that help give them a feeling of really doing, being rewarded for doing a good job. Behind the cameras is Mark Crewman, who's the treasurer of the senate, who has been the one who's really facilitated all of the staff development activities, and worked with Linda Wood, who's our events chair. The kind of thing we get to do is that last week, eleven of us spent an entire day on our annual summer retreat, planning the things that we want to do next year, and setting eight goals that will help us to be active part of the college community, and planning seventeen different events that we'd like to do over the next year to increase the collegiality on the campus. We look forward to a really good year. We'd like to also welcome the new team of administrators. You'll remember back in, for baseball fans in the group, back in the early 2000s, there were the Killer Bees, and now we have our own South Orange County Killer Bees with Doctors Burnett Brigade and Vruchy. And I, oh, and Dave, it sounds like we have about forty years' worth of work to do in the next ten weeks, so we better get moving.
All right. And on behalf of Classified Association, Ms. Morehouse.
I have no report, thank you.
And on behalf of the IVC Classified Senate, Ms. Dixon.
The only thing I wanted to make sure, I'm-
We can hear you, but for the team.
Yes. I actually missed the last board meeting because it was on a Tuesday instead of a Monday, and I have a previous commitment, sorry about that. But I wanted to make sure that the board knew about the award that the Classified Senate gave to our president, Dr. Rockmore. I don't know if you heard about it or not, but it was just in appreciation for all the support that he gives us, and we wanted to show him, and I want you guys to know, how much we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right. Seeing no further business, and the witching hour nearly upon us, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, thank you all.